Good evening Wakefield and welcome to the Town Council meeting for February 10th, 2020. Item number one on our agenda is the call to order. I call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Item number two on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance and it is my great honor tonight to welcome a Wakefield legend, Coach Brad Simpson. Coach Brad Simpson is joined here this evening with three of his captains from the boys varsity basketball team, Ryan Marcus, Pat Collins, and Quinn Behrs. If you would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance gentlemen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you gentlemen. And before we move on, I did want to say a few words about Coach Simpson. I had invited him here this evening to lead us in the pledge, following a weekend celebrating some of his great accomplishments here in Wakefield. Brad Simpson has been a Wakefield resident for the last 67 years. He is a graduate of Wakefield Memorial High School, class of 1964, and then he went on to pursue studies to become an educator. Brad started teaching social studies here at Wakefield Junior High in 1970. And I should point out, he was actually hired by one Dr. Mayo, a familiar name at this table. That same year, Brad joined the coaching staff of Sonny Lane. For people who recall Sonny, he was a legendary coach here in Wakefield in the 70s and into the 80s, and many watching probably remember his great impact here. Coach Simpson began his coaching career that same year in 1970, coaching the 8th grade basketball team. Then he moved on to the freshman team in 1975. In 1978, he was promoted to the junior varsity coach position, and then he was named head coach of Wakefield Memorial High School's varsity basketball team, beginning in 1988, a position that he continues to hold through today. And I should point out that Coach Simpson also ushered through the state champions in 1997, Wakefield Memorial High School being successful that year. Mr. Simpson retired from teaching in 2004 after 34 years of dedicated service to our town. He was inducted into the Wakefield High School Hall of Fame in 2009, and he has coached over 500 games with a winning percentage nearing 70%. I mean, we're talking, that's, those are Belichick numbers, very impressive. And of course, Mr. Coach Simpson is married to Judy Simpson, who serves as Director of Basketball Operations here for Wakefield, and we know that Judy never misses a game. Coach Simpson has had a tremendous impact on Wakefield youth for decades, both on and off the court. I had the opportunity to speak with several residents who know him well, and they said nothing but glowing things about him. As a coach, Brad Simpson has instilled a strong work ethic of determination, perseverance, and commitment to excellence. He is a tenacious coach, instilling positive values and a spirit for always striving to be one's best, helping to shape impressionable youth into mature, responsible young men. And then off the court, Mr. Simpson instilled these same values and inspired a love of learning in the classroom, encouraging young men and young women that he has taught to never stop learning and never stop exploring. He has left an indelible mark on the lives of so many of our Wakefield students. But perhaps the best testament to Coach Simpson's character are his modesty and his selflessness. I should say that when I invited Coach Simpson to be recognized here this evening, he was honored, but not surprisingly, his immediate thought was to his team, and he said he wanted to bring along his three captains who are sitting to his right. Coach wanted this evening to not be about himself, but rather about honoring them and the captains and the team that he has worked so hard and helped them to achieve so much. And there is so much to be excited about, including this season. We are all excited to recognize the boys varsity basketball team as they just qualified for the state tournament, and we wish all of you good luck in that endeavor. So on behalf of the entire Town Council, the alumni, athletes, and students, and the residents of Wakefield, I say thank you. Thank you Coach Simpson for your many contributions and tireless dedication to Wakefield athletics and academics for over these last 50 years. Thank you Coach Simpson for your far-reaching and long-lasting impact on our children. And finally, thank you for helping to make Wakefield, our community of Wakefield, a better place for each of us to call home. I know that a few others had some remarks they wanted to make, so I'll turn it first to Mr. Mayo, who I know has some.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nabroski. Coach, I want to thank you, number one, I played for you, I didn't have quite enough talent. I think one year I got most improved player, which means you were really down at the bottom when you started, or maybe the coaching took me forward. So I do want to thank you for that, but more importantly, I want to thank you for the impact you've had on the young people in town, particularly my son Nick, who played for you, was one of your captains, had infinitely more talent than I did because of his mother, I think. But in any event, I remember that when he was going off to Bentley, you wrote him such a wonderful note, you know, really inspiring him to keep doing well. So, and I think that's what you've done with all of your kids that you've had here, and I do want to thank you for that. You made me a better person, you made my kids better people, and all the people that played for you. So thank you so much, Coach. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And, you know, as, I'll wear my townie badge very proudly right now. As some people may realize, basketball is like a religion in my family, being half a voyages, and I remember as a 10-year-old being dragged to the games when Coach Simpson was assistant coach, all the games. And I remember the after-parties that they used to have. I can picture sitting in Coach Lane's house, you know, my cousin Linda and I off to the side, seeing all these huge basketball men. But basketball was a tremendous family and support when our family was going through something quite difficult, and it gave such love to us. And I will always think of Wakefield basketball that way, and you were such a big part of that. And my former 8th grade history teacher, I was, I don't know if it was good or bad, but our class was filled with basketball players, Plansky and that crew that were pretty good, and we talked a lot about history and then a lot about the Final Four and that, the tournament. We did a lot of that in class, and I'm sure there's a historical perspective, but it just seemed, and I was right there on it, I was all in. So I just want to thank you as well, and as a fun townie fact, not meaning to embarrass anyone, but I also went to the sophomore hop with Patrick's dad, so, you know, it all comes around, way back when. So I wear my townie badge with pride today, and thank you for everything you've done.
Any questions, the council? Again, Coach, on behalf of the entire council and the entire town, we thank you for your commitment, we truly do. And we thank you for coming this evening, as well as captains Marcus, Collins, and Behrs, who were able to take their time out of, literally just got out of practice, I think at 6:30, and they made their way right over here. So again, Coach, congratulations on your great achievements, continued success to the entire team, and thank you for being here this evening. Thank you. Yes, in fact, Coach, we... We should say there was a...
Oh, it's nice, that's nice, yeah.
There was a bit of a celebration this past weekend, actually, for Coach, and so this is the ball that the team had given to him in recognition of his 50 years of service to this town, 50 years in basketball, that's incredible, Coach. So, thank you, thank you for that, certainly.
That's awesome. You don't trust her. Thumbs out, I still remember.
Just finally, I want to thank you as well, Coach, for committing to another 50-year contract. Item number three on the agenda is attendance. We have six councillors here this evening, Councilman May is not yet here this evening, but we have six in attendance currently, as well as Town Administrator, Town Council, and Madam Clerk. Item number four on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes. We had two sets of meeting minutes for review. The first was executive session meeting minutes from January 27th, 2020, and I'll entertain a motion for the approval of those minutes.
Second.
Moved by Councillor Dinoco, seconded by Vice Chair Santos, any discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you is the approval of the January 27th, 2020 executive session meeting minutes, all those in favor? Vote of 6 to 0, the motion carries unanimously. Item 4B on the agenda is the approval of the January 27th, 2020 open Town Council meeting minutes. I'll remind everyone, these are available in the packets that are available online to anyone that goes onto the town's website and goes to Town Council. With that, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of these minutes.
Second.
Moved by Councillor Dinoco, seconded by Vice Chair Santos, any discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you is the approval of the January 27th, 2020 regular Town Council meeting minutes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Vote of 6 to 0, the motion carries unanimously. Item five on the agenda is public engagement. This is the opportunity for members of the community to present any issues or concerns before this body. No votes will be taken, but due consideration will be given. We ask that you limit that participation to three minutes, with additional time allotted in my discretion. With that, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone who has signed up for this evening?
No, Chairman, no one has signed in.
All right, no one this evening. Very happy residents. Item number six is public hearing. You may recall at our last meeting, we had continued a public hearing with the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department, that we had anticipated it being continued to this date and reopened again. I will entertain a motion to open the public meeting, then we can talk about next steps relative to it.
I move that we open the public meeting.
Second. Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Councillor Dinoco, any discussion? Okay, so the motion before you is to open the public hearing, as indicated on the agenda, all those in favor? Okay, vote of 6 to 0. So now that the open public hearing is approved, we had anticipated the Gas and Light Department being here this evening, they are not. They have asked that we continue the hearing to a later date. As this is a public hearing, if there's anyone here from the public who wishes to comment relative to the rescheduling, you're welcome to do so, certainly, I would invite you to do so at this time. If not, I will entertain a motion by this body to continue this public hearing to March 9th, 2020 at 7:05 PM. Are there any members of the public looking to speak on this? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion by this body. And this motion is to continue the public hearing to March 9th, 2020. Moved by Councillor Dinoco, seconded by Councillor Chines, any discussion? Seeing none.
Was there a reason given?
Mr. Mayor?
We're not ready to proceed.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, then the motion before this body is to continue the public hearing for the Gas and Light Department to March 9th, 2020 at 7:05 PM, all those in favor? Vote of 6 to 0, the motion carries unanimously. I'll now entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Close tonight's, because we voted to continue it.
Second.
Moved by Councillor Chines, seconded by Vice Chair Santos, any discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you is to close tonight's public hearing, and it will be reconvening on March 9th, 2020. All those in favor? Vote of 6 to 0, the motion carries unanimously. Item number seven on the agenda is the presentation of fiscal budget, fiscal year 2021 budgets. We have three public safety-related budgets this evening. The first is budget number 16, the Police Department, second budget number 17, the Fire Department, and the third, budget number 19, Emergency Management. I'll remind those watching that we are pursuing a different approach this year, working more collaboratively with Finance Committee, so that they are involved earlier in the process. And we have the Chair of the Subcommittee from Finance Committee here this evening, Mr. Joe Trangali, along with Chief Scori and our Town Accountant Kevin Gill. So gentlemen, good evening to all of you.
If I could just jump in before you hit that budget, Mr. Chairman, just wanted to say that at this point in time, the Town Council, after these three budgets, will have received probably 2/3 to 3/4 of the budgets that we are under control over. And when you look at these all as a group, they are coming in at a rate, at a level of 1.33% over fiscal year 20. Now that does not include the fact that we have a couple of unions that are out of contracts, so that does not include potential contractual increases if granted. I would, in looking through the numbers and projecting what I think would happen, is that if you were to take where I anticipate those contracts to land, we would be all in at around 3.2, 3.3% over last year. So it's kind of a sense of where we are, which is really in the ballpark that we had hoped when we met way back when with the tri-board on the town side. So just want to kind of set the tone for that a little bit as we started, but thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's important, for sure. I understand we'll structure the same way we have more recently, so Mr. Gill, you'll be presenting the budget, then we'll give the opportunity for the Chief to offer any comment, and then Mr. Trangali on behalf of the Finance Committee. So with that, Mr. Gill.
Please, Mr. Chairman, please pass the budget. We're recommending an increase for fiscal 21 of $12,787 for the current year budget. This increase breaks down...
Under Personal Services is actually a decrease of $32,411. As Steve pointed out, the police union has not settled a contract for fiscal 21 yet. This will be revisited at a later time. This line item does include the residual effect of the last police union contract. That increase was approximately $52,000. But due to retirements within the department, we were able to decrease Personal Services by that $32,411. This is where a lower-grade officer is coming in for someone that's been there for many years. I also want to point out that there are no new positions within this budget. Under Contractual Services, there is an increase of $37,398. There were two changes. There's an increase in the Computer Maintenance Line item, $2,398, which is based on the current year expenditures. And under the Unclassified Line item, we increased that $35,000, which is to bring on the Mental Health Clinician for an additional 16 hours a week. Under Materials and Supplies, we increased the Motor Vehicle Parts Line item, $5,000, which is based on both current and prior year usage. And we increased Sundry Charges, which are dues of memberships, $2,800, which is based on current year costs. The total budget request for fiscal 21 is $5,960,655.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gill. Chief Scori?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. Do you have any comments relative to this budget, anything you'd like the council to know?
What I'd like to talk about is the request for the extra $35,000 for the Mental Health Clinician. I think everybody here understands, I've talked in the past about how important Jen Wykowski is to our success and our operation at the Police Department. She's with us right now for 24 hours a week, and that's paid for with a grant, but we could really use her services for the additional 16 hours. And last year, we had 440 calls that were mental health-related, and those calls aren't just respond and clear and write a report. Those are calls that might go on for days or weeks at a time with a tremendous amount of follow-up. And Jen is crucial to our success in helping these people. We couldn't do it without her, and we could really use her for 40 hours a week.
And then, from the Finance Committee perspective, Mr. Trangali, anything to add or offer to the council of the community?
No, the Finance Committee hasn't seen the budget just yet, so, but as the liaison, I support Chief's budget. If you take a look at it as a percentage, it's miniscule. I also think that we're probably understaffed, to be honest with you, and I think that at some point, we're going to need to address that issue. But for the most part, the budget is the budget, it's not much of an increase at all, and I know personally, I support it, and I, you know, I support Chief and his budget.
Thank you for that, Mr. Trangali. I'll turn it over to the council. Are there any questions or comments of councillors? Vice Chair Santos.
Obviously not for this year, but Joe's, jumping off of what you said, would, and I've talked to you about it, I've talked to a lot of your officers, if at some point getting another body, do you think that would affect overtime, or?
It would definitely have a...
Okay, and that, so that kind of acts as a balancing?
It's a balancing.
Yeah, okay, good. So you can bug the big guy, you know, in the next cycle. I think it makes sense.
Thank you.
And thank you for, you know what a fan I am of you and your department. You guys do a great job.
Thanks.
Councillor Chines?
Thank you. Two questions, one of which is, I think, probably more a tactical question for Mr. Gill, and then the second is more of a policy question. On the additional hours for the Mental Health Counselor, which I'm very supportive of, if there's a reason, is there a reason why we have that in Unclassified versus in the Personal Services line, or can you speak a little bit to sort of why it's fitting in what seems like sort of a random accounting bucket?
That person is, they provide a service, they're actually not a Town of Wakefield employee.
So I guess why Unclassified versus Contractual Services or something else?
Under Contractual Services, if there was a, we probably should have maybe put in a Professional Services line under Contractual, but where there wasn't one, we were trying to find some way to drop that charge, so we picked Unclassified.
Okay, thank you. More policy-related question for Chief Scori. First of all, thank you for pulling this together and for the great work that the Police Department does. Wondering if you could talk a little bit about just some of the trends and patterns that you're seeing this year, particularly with regard to overdoses, addiction, and those types of calls? I mean, there seems to be some data that sort of the, you know, the impact of the opioid crisis, at least at a state level, is lessening a little bit. Are you seeing any of that in your today, today? And if so, or if not, sort of what else is kind of coming down the pike as you think about the needs in the community?
Let me share this past year's numbers with you, actually. So last year, we had 58 reported overdoses, which was down 4.9% from 2018, but we had 61. Fatal overdoses were down 71.4% from 2018, we had seven in 2018. And non-fatal overdoses were up 3.7%, only because more people survived. Narcan was used in 32 cases, and Narcan has been the difference-maker. All the officers carry Narcan, the Fire Department has Narcan, Catalina Ambulance has Narcan. The biggest thing, the biggest difference we've seen is a reduction in what I call repeat overdoses, and that's people who overdose more than once. In 2018, we had multiple people who overdosed multiple times, and we didn't see that this past year. And I think that's a result of the hard work of our Family Services Officer, and now the Health Clinician, and our Recovery Coach. The amount of follow-up they do, it's tremendous. I mean, they spend countless hours with these people, getting them help, getting them to where they need to be, and it's been a difference-maker. And those are the numbers that I hear nationwide as well, across the state, across the nation, the numbers are down. I think that the education that's going on about the opioid crisis, and the help that's out there for people, and the focus from all government levels, is making a difference.
That's definitely good news, and I have to say, what's sort of almost more impressive than the numbers coming down is the reduction in the number of repeat overdoses because of the investment there. I mean, I think you can draw a straight line from the work that your team's done with the resources that we have to that. Can I ask sort of on the other end, are there other trends and patterns that you're seeing that are more concerning, or things that you're keeping an eye out of as you look over the next, you know, one to three years?
Drug-related or crime patterns?
In general?
One of the things that concerns me is we've seen an increase in methamphetamines in the area, which historically have always been a west coast type of thing. We have seen that recently. It has very bad side effects. It'll be something that hopefully doesn't blow out of control like the opioid crisis. And then all the rest of the crime trends, crime itself seems to have been down a little bit this past year, and I think that's all related to the opioid crisis, is as we help the people who have this addiction get away from it, you'll see a decrease in crime as well.
Great, thank you, appreciate it.
Councillor Dinoco?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kevin, thank you very much for the presentation. Chief, you and I have had several discussions about the department. I want to give you and your staff kudos in regards to doing what you do while being understaffed. You currently only have 42 officers, where you should have 47. And to hear Mr. Trangali say that he would like to help support you even more by potentially increasing the levels is good news to hear. How many officers or cadets are currently signed up for the empty slots?
Right now, we have one officer in the Havel Police Academy with an expected graduation date in June, and we are currently going through the process to hire four more with an academy start date May 11th.
May 11th, so you are now weaning through all the candidates?
We are, we are at the end of the process. We started the process back in the middle of December.
And does it all look good that we'll have four?
I'm confident that we will have four.
Okay, and then, once they come out of the academy in their offices, how long is their training time?
It's a three-month field training period.
Three-month field training, so we're looking at close to...
So for the officers going to the academy in May, they'll be done with their field training right about this time next year.
Excellent, excellent. And then, how do we, are we going to be able to handle the, continue to handle the lessening of the department now as we move forward? I mean, because I know there's unexpected departures from the force coming up, temporary departures, but...
There are. And with the realignment of some personnel from patrol to some other positions, we'll handle it the best we can, we'll do fine. I have the utmost confidence in our people to be able to get it done.
As well as we do as well, and I want to thank you for that, because you are doing an outstanding job while you are shorthanded, so kudos to the department.
Thank you.
Question, I'm sorry, Councillor By.
So I just want to echo everyone, what everyone's saying, Chief, you've done a great job, and we appreciate all your work. I always joke that my friends in the Middlesex DA always say that Wakefield is their favorite police department to work with, so 65 cities and towns, that's a great compliment to you guys. And I just, also just wanted to thank Kevin and Steve and you for working so, I don't, it was maybe a year ago, less than a year ago, that Councillor Santos and Councillor Smith-Galvin and I met with you and Jen and the team, and saw a need for an increase in the Mental Health Counselor, and I'm so glad that we're making it happen this budget cycle, and I just, 440 calls, I mean, that's, you know, over one a day, that's a lot.
It is a lot.
It makes me, you know, worried about just one person, one full-time person, so that's a continued conversation. And then, just Kevin, just to follow up, it's a, 24 hours is grant-funded, what does that grant go tell?
I think it's a recurring grant.
It is a recurring grant, yeah.
So that's, so that's great, okay.
Jen's been with us for eight years now.
Oh, okay. I didn't, I thought it was a newer position, that's great. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Chief, just a couple of questions. I know you said that the fatalities are down, which is great, overdose fatalities. Are you finding that you're administering less Narcan since you don't have the same repeat individuals that are having it administered to?
It's about the, it's the same. It was administered in the same number of cases as it was last year. We had a reduction of three cases, so there is a slight reduction, but it's right around the same.
So on the one hand, it's good that it's not repeat, it's not administered repetitively to the same individuals, but it's also, it's a bit concerning that roughly the same amount of Narcan is being administered, because that means it's more individuals it's being administered to.
Correct, and so you have to understand too, that these aren't just Wakefield residents. There's people that overdose in vehicles that pull off the highway, there's people that overdose in bathrooms in public places, so they're not just Wakefield residents. But another thing I'd like to add is, the Police Department is now a part of a software program, it's multi-county, and it's called Critical Incident Management System, and what it does is it tracks overdoses from multiple counties. So if a Wakefield resident overdoses in another town, we get notified, which never happened before. So then we can follow up with the Recovery Coach and the Mental Health Clinician, and follow up with our own residents. And the same goes here, if we have somebody from another community that overdoses here in Wakefield, that community gets notified as well. So that was something we never had before, and when you log into the system, if you want to track it, the person's name gets color-coded, so we know what level of service they've received already, and we can go to the next level if we have to. And this just started maybe two months ago.
And do you have a sense of the ratio of Wakefield residents to, shall I just say, out-of-towners?
Yeah.
out-of-towners that have Narcan administered? Is it...
I would say it's probably 75 to 25% Wakefield residents.
Really? So that's, I mean, that's a pretty significant percentage when you think about that.
It is, it is. I mean, just the fact that we have overdoses is concerning.
Right. And then, I think this is probably better for Mr. Gill or Mr. Mayo, on the grant side of things, do we have any opportunities to find other grants that could address, say, like the additional 16 hours, for example, or even more time?
I think we're always looking for the opportunities to get grants. I know the health department has been working quite a bit trying to find things out there that they could apply for that we would receive, yes.
We're always looking at things like the COPS, called COPS grants, it's called, to see what we can do to help add to the staff. So we're daily looking for it, so all the time.
This just being such a high priority at a state level, you know, when you think about it, and it's great to have 16 hour, or 24 hours currently, don't get me wrong, but it just seems like, the need is clearly there, you know, Chief, as you're saying. So, you know, it's something that seems like there should be more opportunities available for us as a community to take advantage of. And then, on the vehicle fleet side of things, that's, you, going back to Finance Committee, I know you have a pretty good schedule in place, right, in terms of replacements, so that we try to optimize that, don't we?
We do. So I can explain the increase in the motor vehicle parts. So back in around 2010, Ford discontinued the production of the Crown Victoria, which is the, was at the time the staple of police cars. And they came out with the Ford Taurus and then the Ford Explorer. Neither one of those vehicles has met the test of law enforcement, and they're breaking down much, much more quickly than the Crown Victoria did. And there's been some costly repairs. So what we've done in the last two years is we started to buy Dodge. The officers, the feedback from the officers is that the cars are much better, they're much more solid vehicle mechanically, we'll see how they work out. But we had to get away from Ford because the repairs are just becoming too costly.
And I hope, in the long term, it's actually going to be more, more cost-effective to do that.
I think it will be.
And have more reliable vehicles as well.
Yeah, hopefully, cycle them out, so.
Right. Exactly. Okay. And I should also point out, you know, Chief, the department does phenomenal work and does phenomenal work despite the number of challenges that I know that they deal with every day in the facilities. I mean, their facility is challenged in a way that I think a lot of other departments are. So the fact that we can provide that exceptional service day in and day out in their current, you know, space and in all of the challenges that that space presents, I think is a real testament to some real perseverance on the part of the officers and the entire staff. So I thank you for that. I know that, obviously, that issue will be coming up in the coming weeks and months, but to walk through this space and understand and hear anecdotally what they do in addition to, you know, the policing that's required. 21st century policing has changed, but it doesn't mean, you know, buckets for drips. And you're trying to find ways to insulate windows that, you know, are bringing cold air in and those sorts of things, so more to come on that certainly.
Thank you.
But thank you to the whole department. Counselor Smith-Galvin.
Just a quick question while we have you here, and I echo everything that my colleagues have said. And I realize that the parking enforcement salaries are in here, but I'm just wondering, just from your perspective, how that's gone. Like, I hear good things about having an officer on the street, very visible, we see the car everywhere, so I just would like your feedback on that.
The most rewarding part of the whole program has been the feedback from the business owners, both in Greenwood and downtown. There were some that were against it, and some that have been quite outspoken over the years at parking forums, and to hear their positive feedback now about how there's turnover in the downtown and all the customers can find parking spaces, and the same thing for Greenwood, it's a success. And I can tell you that the parking attendant that we have out there now, he's very popular with the people, they like him. We have another one that should be starting next week or the week after. So I'm proud of the way the program has succeeded. It accomplished the goal of what we wanted to do, and that was to create the parking turnover.
Certainly. Thank you. It has been a pleasure to watch that program over the last, really since July. So thank you, Chief, and for all the work, additional work you're doing relative to that. I know it's, it falls on your department, so thank you for that as well.
Thank you.
So with that, I will, unless there are further questions or comment, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of this budget. So this would be a motion for the approval of a budget for the police department in the amount of $5,960,655 for fiscal year 2021.
Second?
Moved by Counselor Danakko, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. Any discussion relative to that? Again, thank you, everyone, and thank you, Mr. Mayo, for all of your hard work as well, you know, relative to this. So with that, the motion before you is for the approval of fiscal year 2021's police budget in the amount of $5,960,655. All of those in favor?
Aye.
By a vote of six to zero, the motion carries unanimously. Again, thank you for your great work.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You as well.
You too.
Thank you, Joe.
Item number seven B on the budget is, on the agenda is budget number 17. This is the fire department budget. Mr. Gill will be joined this evening by Chief Sullivan and Mr. Doug Butler from the Finance Committee, and he is chair of the Subcommittee for Fire. Good evening, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The fire department budget for fiscal '21, we are recommending an increase to this budget of $93,466. I'm sorry, 93,446. This increase is all in personal services, similar to the police union. The fire union is currently in negotiation, union negotiations. Once the union contract is settled, this personal services portion of the budget will be revisited. There are three items that make up the 93,466, I'm sorry, 93,446. This is the residual effect of the last union contract. We also increased the overtime account $30,000, which is based on both current and prior year usage. And we also offset the personal services $41,546 from a grant, the SAFER grant that we'll be receiving. There are no new positions within this budget. The total budget request for fiscal '21 is $5,706,306.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Good evening, Chief Sullivan. Have you anything to add to what Mr. Gill said?
I think it's a fair and honest budget, and I let it stand on its merits.
Good evening. Mr. Butler, I know, Mr. Butler, you've been involved with these discussions and helping formulate this budget on behalf of the Finance Committee. Have you anything to add?
Sure. I think we've, I think Councilman Dombrowski and myself started on this budget probably six or seven years ago together. And I'm proud to say that we have gradually gotten the overtime issue of, you know, consistently underfunding it. We've gotten it up to a level where there will likely still be reserve fund transfers this year and possibly next, but it's now no longer a guarantee, and it's not going to hit the town for $300,000 at the, you know, in the October town meeting. I think we're proud that we've made sort of more rational decisions around budgeting for overtime. Again, people, you know, one of the things with the minimum manning requirements and with him being short-staffed has been being able to get enough people to fill the shifts. And so I think the chief's done a very good job with that. In terms of, you know, the additional spends, I think, you know, it isn't your place, but I think one of the things, we were excited for some of the capital improvements that they've put forth. And I think the only thing that, like, you know, probably rubbed us in the Finance Committee the wrong way is the, I think the police did their radios last year, and then we're potentially going to go out for radios this year. It would have been great if we had been able to, like, do it as a one lump something. By the way, I also have no idea if you get a deal on, you know, buying 105 radios versus buying 50. But no, the chief's done a really nice job of, you know, putting this budget together, and I think he's worked with Steve and Kevin well. And just also, the only other concern we have is the SAFER grants. While we love them, they're, don't get addicted to them because they, they offer you, like, short-term benefits, but then you're, you know, you've added a body and, or in this instance, he hasn't added a body because we have the deputy fire chief position that you created last year. So I think we're fine with that, with the one SAFER grant. I don't think we, I think we might push back if there were more.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Mr. Mayo, did you have anything to add?
I'm very happy with the budget. I am hopeful that this year's overtime will come in close. We watch that every couple of weeks, and that is a function of Manning. And I think for the first time, this May, for the first time, I think in many, many years, we have two firefighters in the academy. We may come out, in May, we will have a full staff, keeping our fingers crossed.
Yeah.
We think so. It'll be the first time in a long time, which will really help. I think the SAFER grant was a great use. I love the SAFER grant. Mr. Butler and I have had conversations over this over the years, but that really helped us move the fire department forward when we needed to years and years ago. It is a way of phasing in new positions. I think that's easier on the budget. And in this case, we already had the position, so we kind of, it was going to be there anyway, so we moved that in. So I'm a great fan of the SAFER grant, but I'm sure we'll have many more interesting discussions on that as we go forward over the years. I think it is a good, fair budget as well.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mayo. Any comments or questions of the council? Vice Chair Santos.
As liaison to the fire department, I've talked to, I talked to Chief Sullivan just this afternoon, and have talked to him in the past and a lot of his top folks. And he, I was impressed that he came in and said that this was a fair and honest budget. He said that, you know, I said, "Do you need me to advocate for anything? Because I'll, I'll fight a little bit if you need me to." He said, "No, but wait for capital." So I'm going to circle back with Chief Sullivan and see what he needs me to advocate for, with him for, so, but thank you for bringing it in. You know how I feel about your department as well.
Thank you. Counselor Chines?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the preview of what's to come in Counselor Santos. Couple of questions, if I may. First, I did want to talk a little bit about the overtime piece. Just looking at how we're trending so far for fiscal 2020, it looks like we expect to be fairly significantly over budget and overtime this year. I don't know, are we anticipating that we will have to look at another reserve fund transfer this year in any sense as to the magnitude of what that would be?
We are over on the overtime piece. We are under on some of the other regular salaries piece. So we look at the entire salaries together. Every week, when the overtime numbers come out, Kevin and I race each other to see who looks at them first. We get a few more good weeks, we might be okay. But I think we, we are anticipating probably a reserve fund. If need be, we may put an article in like we've done in the past, but I don't think it's going to be to the extent it was before.
Okay.
Of course, that could all change.
Absolutely, if something...
Because of what happens. But minimum manning is very important, that we maintain both fire stations and then we have the safety of the town, the safety of the crew, so that is...
Oh, yeah, and understand, I'm not asking to suggest there's something else we could do about it. It's more just anticipating. I mean, if you kind of took a straight-line doubling of that number, it would be alarming in terms of reserve fund transfer.
If you looked at personal services, though. Yeah, if you just double the personal services line, it's almost dead on the budget. And if you look miscellaneous overtime's way under, and I'm not sure if that's just a function of where you put things.
Yeah, okay. So I do appreciate, in light of that as well, I do appreciate adding the money into overtime. It's great to see something that looks like it will be kind of in the ballpark of where we expect to be. I did have a question on the holiday line item. It looks like that increases by about $30,000, actually about $20,000 relative to prior year. Is that just part and parcel of salaries increasing, or...
Yes.
Okay. Next question I had, could you give us an update on the status of the hiring for the deputy fire chief that we appropriated last year?
Yeah, there's an assessment center that's scheduled for March 28th, which is on target. Eligible members of the department are actually in a process of applying for that as we speak. It was released yesterday.
Great.
And if I can jump in, the, all the positions in the fire department that are firefighters are under civil service. So this is a civil service process that we need to go through. It's a little bit lengthier than maybe we might do if we were going out on our own. So that's kind of, you know, we have to go by their rules.
Great. Any sense as to, so it sounds like we've got the assessment scheduled in March, any sense as to the timeline of the process after that?
Yeah, the grades are, should be out within, believe it or not, two weeks. I should know within two weeks what the, what the results are.
Okay. So we anticipate that we should be able to go into fiscal '21 with someone in that position?
Absolutely.
Great. Terrific. And then, just the last question that I had, I did notice that there is a line item in here for communications, and certainly understand and appreciate the need for communications, particularly around emergencies, but was wondering if there was any thought given to sort of how we utilize the communications manager that the town has versus contracting out, if there's any opportunity there, or any duplication that we might be able to address?
You mean the public relations, yeah, is it a small line item, like 3,600?
Yeah, it's very small.
Yeah. That's for, I actually would lobby very heavily to keep that. We've had, unfortunately, like any department our size, we've had some issues pop up that are rather delicate and require specialized services from an organization like that, and I would feel very strongly about keeping that.
Does that work, though, at least to get coordinated with the town communications manager, just so that, you know, there's sort of consistency around messages?
It will, it's also in the police budget as well.
Okay.
That communication is specialized for things that happen in that area that we can work with.
Got it.
But I, again, I assume that... Would try to coordinate everything, yes.
Great, okay. Thank you very much, appreciate it, Chief, and thanks for all the good work that the department does.
Thank you.
Thanks. I think Counselor Chines to follow up on your question. I have spoken with our communications manager about just that, about the coordination so that we are on message as a town, so she, I know she is tuned into that as well, certainly. But to Chief's point, there are instances where it sounds like highly specialized in a, in a specific area are more appropriate under certain circumstances.
It's used for specific, very specific reasons, and it's very necessary.
Right, indeed. I would echo Mr. Butler's concerns relative to the overtime. I think for a long time, we were kind of budgeting overtime the same way we had been budgeting snow removal and that. They really weren't, weren't real numbers. So they looked nice, and they made everyone feel good, but in reality, we were constantly having transfer of funds because we were under-budgeting, under-budgeting. So to your point about this being a more honest budget, Chief, you know, not to give it a negative connotation in the past, but I think we're all realizing that, you know, going forward, we have to really be true about what our, at least estimations or approximations are relative to overtime. And I think we're doing that.
We had a lot of injuries the first half of the year, which definitely impacted overtime.
Certainly. Again, if you look at the salaries versus, you know, the overtime, you can see kind of where those trade-offs end up being, because more people, you know, more firefighters have to then take on more, more of the burden, obviously. I think otherwise, I think, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one question, it just popped up. We have to, we're having the assessment done where candidates are going to be taking the test for the deputy chief right now? But that's open, that's open to everyone, all right?
It's open to the rank of captain.
To the rank of captain, but if there was someone from another department in another town?
No.
No, it only for us.
It's an inside exam, yeah.
Okay, so it's in-house only?
Civil service, in-house exam.
Okay, that's, okay, thank you. That answers my question. Thank you.
Any more questions or comments?
All right. So with that, I will entertain a motion for the approval of the fiscal year 2021 fire budget in the amount of $5,706,306.
Same.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos. I'm going to call it for Counselor Chines. Do you have any further discussion?
Again, Chief, I'll just say, you know, thank you to you and your department for what you've done, especially under some difficult circumstances with the injuries, you know, that you've had. And, you know, I think it's going to be hopefully smoother selling ahead, you know, in terms of staffing.
I also should take a second and say that the department is really working extremely well with Cataldo Ambulance since we made the switch. I just have nothing but good things to say about them. They've been very good. The service is excellent. And I have no problems to report with them at all. Very satisfied.
Very good to hear. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Chief.
So with that, before you, is the motion for the approval of the fire department budget for fiscal year 2021 in the amount of $5,706,306. All of those in favor?
Aye.
If a vote of six to zero, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is item 7C. This is budget number 19, the emergency management budget. With that, we will have Mr. Gill presenting as well.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Tom Walsh here. Tom is the emergency management director. Tom does a great job for us. We are requesting an increase to this budget of $1,200 for fiscal '21. This increase is all in the personal services line item, and is for a negotiated salary increase. Main expenses within this budget at the contractual services is a $10,000 emergency operations center line item. This is used for, over at the Public Safety Building, the emergency operations center over there, which is used to service, upgrade, and maintain the equipment within the center. There's also a $16,000 notification system line item, which is used for the code red, which is the reverse 911 in cases of emergency to notify Wakefield citizens. The total budget request for fiscal '21 is $74,200.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Director Walsh, have you anything to add?
No. Just a small increase there. The rest of the contractual stuff is good. We are basically, what I try to do is to try to pull in grants when I can. Working on a couple of grants right now for the town dealing with police and fire on the active shooter. So, and I use a little bit of this money if I need to get either the police or fire something else that they need, you know, not once, but if there's a needed piece of equipment or something I can do for them, then we'll try to switch things over. But basically, the amount of money I have in there is sufficient, you know, unless we had something that we had to make a big change, something came down from, say, the federal government theme or a meme, or we wanted to make some alterations, then I would naturally come to the council and Mr. Mayo and talk about that. But right now, we're sufficient, and everything's going good.
And Director Walsh, I should add that it's not so clearly reflected in this budget, but the grants that you have been able to secure for the town, quite impressive, the work that you've been able to do in bringing dollars into our community. So I want to make sure we recognize that, because it's not so clearly, you know, we're looking at the cost, but also, you know, what's been brought in. So that's a real consideration here relative to the totality of things.
If I could quantify that, because he was very modest. He's been involved in grants that are well over $430,000.
Right.
I mean, that he's been involved in working with other departments, working, collaborating with them. You know, we are looking at things you don't want to talk about, active shooter training for our departments, including, you know, town hall employees will be having one, you know, this spring. You know, this civilian response team, which was done by a grant, we've got great response from the public on this. People want to be part of it. We've been able to use people on this at town events to help out, to kind of make sure we have a bit more supervision and help out there. So Tom's been really a great addition to our team. And I, you know, 434, we can turn that into another, into 860 next year, we'll be in good shape. So no pressure.
No pressure. Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Counsel Chines?
I just wanted to say, in addition to the money bringing in, I think what you've done with the money has been really impressive. When I think about the active shooter drill that's coming up, some of the pandemic planning and so forth, you know, really impressive work. And it's clear the value of having this role in this department for the community. So I wanted to thank you for that. I just did have a quick question, just really to remind myself, and I think I know the answer, but I'm going to ask anyway. The code red notification system, I'm assuming that's a subscription basis, so, you know, that $16,000 covers us for the entire year regardless of how many times we use it?
Yes. Basically, it's almost unlimited, but, so we have, contractually, we have over a $12,000 automatic that we pay out. But then we keep a little bit in reserve to make sure if there's something else that comes in, or if there's a new change to the system that we want to add. Like, we were able to add on a couple of languages this year, but didn't cost us anything. So we added three major languages in Chinese, Russian, and I think, I think Spanish. I don't have those notes with me, but, and we were able to negotiate that with the code red, and they gave it to us. And when we went back up, they gave it to us again. So I had had it implemented last year, and when we went into the next fiscal year, they gave it to us again. So, and I intend to look at that down the road and maybe increase it. That's where I'd like to have a little extra money. If I find that we really need to add on, let's say, another two or three languages, you know, so that people are notified and they can understand it.
Absolutely.
Then we could do it. And it's already eaten up in the thing. I don't have to come back to Mr. Mayo or the council to say, see, I need some extra money. We have it built in there, and we can use it that way.
Yep. Great. Thank you.
Your turn.
Vice Chair Santos?
I'm not afraid to say that when we first started talking about this position, I was not a fan, before I met you, Tom, before your name was even mentioned. But I just, for a number of reasons, I was thinking we could do things in-house, perhaps. However, I was utterly wrong about that, and I think because of you. Admitting I was wrong, if my husband's watching, he just fell right off the couch, by the way. But talking to the line firefighters and police officers, they just, and both chiefs, sing your praises as to what you bring to the department professionally, your connections, and your support. So I am such a fan and will always fight to support you in this position. So I couldn't be happier with this job.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Again, thank you, Director Walsh, because you were able, through these grants, to bring opportunities to the town that we probably wouldn't otherwise be able to realize. Again, active shooter being a part of life, and those trainings are so critical, pandemic, to echo Counsel Chines, these are the sorts of things.
We, just so I can, right now, the schools should be, by the end of this month, all the surveillance cameras inside and out should be put up and installed under the last grant we got. And we have a gunshot detection system that is, should be completed in this next three days at the Galvin. And I'm waiting upon the state on the officer grants, if they duplicate that grant, this time out, I'll be able to finish off the Galvin completely, go to the high school. And I think at that point, the only thing we'd lack, we'd have all of our security up, as far as I'm concerned, on the technical part of it, and then it's just the training that I want to have done on the active shooter for the schools. And I think that we'd be in good shape. I do want to say this, that the resource offices that we have in the schools do a fantastic job. When I was with the city, I couldn't stress enough, the schools run much better and much more secure when we have them. If there's three jobs that we need in this, in this community, would be the resource offices. So I know when budgets get tight and everything, and say, gee, maybe the, those positions are critical, because it's that day-to-day contact they have with the children that count, and the trust that's built up with them. And that carries on, because very few households have one child. So, you know, the next child that goes up there, you know, Mary's brother, John, John, Mary says, oh, don't forget to say hi to Oscar J. And that trust and that build goes on again. I can't say enough about the job that those people do, too. So I would have been reluctant if I didn't do that.
It's unfortunate that you have to do the trainings you have to do.
Yes.
But we're fortunate that you're able to do them. So again, thank you for that, and thank you for securing the funds.
So with that, I will entertain a motion for the approval of the emergency management budget for fiscal year 2021 in the amount of $74,200.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counsel Dinako. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you is the approval of $74,200 for the emergency management fiscal year 2021 budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
If a vote of six to zero, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. We'll see you again.
Yes.
Item number eight on the agenda is a carnival request. We have a representative from the Wakefield Independence Day Committee, or multiple representatives here this evening to talk to us about the event. There is a request for use of the Galvin parking lot during April school vacation, April 20 through 26. So with that, good evening, and if you could introduce yourselves.
Brian Fox, chair of the Independence State Committee.
Leon Helly, vice chair and carnival coordinator.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So tell us about the event.
Sure. We're here to request approval to have our annual April vacation carnival. I believe there's been one there since about 1991 or '92. But I've taken a couple of years off, but we're almost to 30 years of having the carnival. So it's like a Wakefield tradition at this point.
Thank you very much. And we have a letter in our packets that people can see online to that effect. Any questions of the council? Counsel Dinako.
Once again, good evening. This is one of your largest fundraisers.
It helps raise about 20% of our annual budget.
It is well received by the entire town and many communities surrounding. I fully support the approval of this. And I know you're coming forward with your 75th anniversary preparations, and this will go a long ways, too.
Yes, it will.
And great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the request from the Wakefield Independence Day Committee for use of the Galvin middle school parking lot for school vacation week, April 20 through 26.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counsel Dinako. Any further discussion? The motion before you is the approval, as stated. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote of six to zero, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, and best of luck.
Thank you.
Hopefully some free weather. No rain. No rain goes big parade.
Item number nine on the agenda is donations. And this evening, in our packet, we have very generous donations made to BB Library in the amount of $1,010. I'll entertain a motion relative to those, the acceptance of those donations.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Dinako, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, the motion before you is the approval of the acceptance of $1,010 in donations to the BB Library. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote of six to zero, the motion carries unanimously. Item number 10 on the agenda is a series of licenses before the council. The first is item 10A, which is a Class 1 application. The applicant is seeking renewal of a Class 1 license. The entity is EMS Direct LLC located at 1618 Del Carmine Street. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of that Class 1 license.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Dinako, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. Any discussion? Again, the application is in our packets, available online. So with that, I will, the motion before you is the approval of a Class 1 application, renewal for EMS Direct LLC. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote of six to zero, the motion carries unanimously. Item 10B is a Class 2 application. This, the applicant is seeking approval of, the renewal of a Class 2 license, also EMS Direct at the same location, 1618 Del Carmine Street. I'll entertain a motion for the approval.
Second.
Made by Counsel Dinako, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. Any discussion? Counsel Chines?
Sorry, just a question, maybe. For Mr. Mullen, is it necessary for them to get both a Class 1 and Class 2 license?
Well, if you sell new cars, you have to sell them under a Class 1. And if you're ever going to do a trade-in, you need a Class 2.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Just to clarify, these are renewals as well as the currently existing licenses that are being renewed. We have a motion, I believe, Madam Clerk.
Yep.
So any further discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you is the approval of the Class 2 license for EMS Direct LLC. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote of six to zero, the motion carries unanimously. Item 10B2, excuse me, is the request by the applicant for the approval of the renewal of a Class 2 license for 2020 for Albrecht Auto Land of Wakefield located at 614 North Avenue. I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Dinako, by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counsel Dinako. Any discussion? And just point of clarification, Mr. Mullen, I know that we approved last time that this was transferring over to a different dealership, but this is just in the interim, to keep them current, correct?
No, this is so they can do the trade-ins and what have you. It's the same Albrecht, yeah.
So they're looking to still do everything they're doing?
Exactly.
With the dealership affiliation, then?
Yes, yeah.
In addition to the class. All right, got it. All right. All right. So the motion before you is the approval of this Class 2 license renewal for Albrecht Auto Land at 614 North Avenue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote of six to zero, the motion carries unanimously. Item 10C is a one-day liquor license request. The applicant is a private resident seeking use of the Heritage Room for a private event on February 15, 2020, from 5 until 8 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counsel Chines. Any discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you is the approval of a one-day liquor license for the Americal Civic Center Heritage Room on February 15, 2020. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote of six to zero, the motion carries unanimously. Item 10C2, the applicant is also, this applicant is also seeking a one-day liquor license for a fundraising event at the Americal Civic Center on February 15, 2020, from 2 until 7 p.m. I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Dinako, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. Any discussion?
Just quickly, I love the fact that it's a non-Wakefield person coming to celebrate, you know, a really great event, which means the word's getting out there, that this is a good room to come rent. So I think that's great.
Indeed. Further comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is the approval of a one-day liquor license for a fundraising event at the Americal Civic Center on February 15, 2020. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote of six to zero, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on now to item number 11 on the agenda. This is a referral to the Planning Board. This came up last meeting as well. I'll remind this body that by statute, we're required to refer this on to the Planning Board. We are not taking a position or taking any action. It's simply a perfunctory vote that we're taking in order to move it forward through the process. And this applicant is seeking a, so any bylaw change to amend, as indicated in the packets that we've received? So with that, I'll entertain a motion to refer the request to the Planning Board.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counsel Chines. Any discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you is the referral to the Planning Board, as I've just described. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote of six to zero, the motion carries unanimously. Item number 12 is constituent issues. This is the opportunity for town councillors to raise any issues or thoughts or concerns that any residents may have. Nothing will be voted on this evening, but any items of consequence may in fact end up on a future town council agenda. So with that, I'll ask, are there any constituent issues for this evening? Seeing none. I'll just make one mention. The issue had come up that on Westwater and I think it was Armory, there had been, not been a stop sign.
Armory and North.
Yes. Right on North Ave, actually, on both sides of, yeah. So I spoke with Mr. Mayo about that before this meeting, and Mr. Mayo had already spoken with Traffic Advisory. That's on the agenda, I believe, Mr. Mayo, coming up this, end of this week?
Yeah, Valentine's Day, that's what we're doing.
Yes.
In traffic.
So I expect at our next meeting, that, you know, we'll have that for approval. But certainly, you know, going to Mr. Mayo, having him be, you know, running as point helps to move those things along quicker. So thank you for that, Mr. Mayo, certainly. All right. So having no other constituent issues, item number 13, I'll just make mention of two things that we have to discuss. One of them is a celebrating Wakefield volunteer appreciation event. And this event is going to be on Monday, March 9, 2020. It will begin before our town council meeting, and this is the opportunity for us to recognize all of the volunteers that we are appointing to various boards, commissions, and committees. That it will be at the high school, in the high school cafeteria, and then we'll recognize them at the town council meeting that would follow at 7 p.m. But again, that's on March 9. And volunteers are the reason we're able to operate as we are as a town, and we want to be sure that we're thanking the community, recognizing the great work. We have a lot of talents. You often hear us talking about the resumes and applications that come in for the various commissions, committees, and boards. And we really, I think, in my three years here, I've just, just the number of applicants that we've seen, and the caliber of the applicant, and the diversity in terms of backgrounds and experiences, has really been impressive. But it's important that we thank our, all of our volunteers and keep them, keep them all on board. So with that, more information will come out, certainly through social media. And anyone that's on a committee board or commission, please watch your email, because you'll see that invitation coming out as well. And I'll be working with Vice Chair Santos, who is our point person for all those volunteers, and we hope to have a really strong turnout, because I think it's a really great opportunity to be recognized and to say thanks. The other item I just wanted to briefly touch base on was envision Wakefield downtown revitalization. The next meeting is tomorrow evening at the Americal in the gymnasium. It's at 7 p.m. You'll get the latest updates in terms of where the project stands, what we're looking at in terms of next steps going forward. I participated in a very productive conference call just this morning, actually, with the latest updates and discussion points. And I think that if you've been to these meetings before, I encourage you to come and get the most recent update. If you haven't yet been, it's a great opportunity. If you cannot make it, WCAT will be If you cannot make it, WCIT will be recording it. Thank you very much, WCIT, for that. And we'll also have all the information available on our town's website, including the recording of the entire event. So it's a really good opportunity, but this is an ongoing process. This is a community-driven process, and we're really at a unique point now where community input is really going to continue to have a significant impact on the direction of this project. So I'd encourage everyone to come out tomorrow evening for that. We have no questions on other those items. We'll move on to the next. So item number 14 is matters not anticipated for the agenda. These would be items that came up in the last 48 hours and therefore couldn't make it onto our meeting agenda to meet open meeting law requirements. I should point out, we do a very good job of always posting things timely. I saw a recent article relative to that. But we, as a body, are very good about making sure.
We weren't mentioned in it.
We were not. We were not mentioned in it, indeed. So assuming there are none, we'll move on to the next. Then item number 15 is announcements and acknowledgements. This is the opportunity for town councillors, Madam Clerk, town administrator, and town council to be able to offer any announcements or recognition. So with that, if anyone has any announcements to make, you have the floor. Vice Chair Santos.
I just want to thank Betsy and her staff for running a great election on Tuesday. They were, they were there from 6:15 in the morning until 8:00 at night. They did a great job. I want to thank everyone who came out and voted. Certainly, my friends from precincts 1, 2, 3, and 7 that showed up, a lot, many people, not realizing that it was just 4, 5, and 6. But it went smooth. The police officers that were there keeping traffic going. It's tricky to hold an election while school is in session, certainly, but I think they did a nice job.
Thank you. Vice Chair Santos. Anyone else? Counsel Smith-Galvin.
I'll just, I'll just echo that. And in addition to running a great election last week, there's one coming up. And the deadline to register to vote is, I think, this Wednesday.
The 12th.
It's the 12th, right. So this Wednesday. So anybody who wants to vote in the upcoming presidential primary and the general election for the state rep for precincts 4, 5, and 6 should make sure that they're registered to vote. Just, this one's a little, in the future, but there's a community group that's putting together what we're calling the Big Purge, which is going to be a big town-wide recycling day. We're coming up with, you know, lots of different things from e-waste and hazardous waste to shredding and composting and trying to have some adjacent events going on for kids and families. So that'll be April 25 from at least 9 to 1. There's a website being put together on it right now, and we're hoping to get something in the press in the next week or two. But we're trying to get the word out early so that people can start collecting things.
TV's still?
Uh, yeah, we're hoping, yes.
Excellent.
Trying to do styrofoam.
I have two carnivals worth of stuff.
Yes. So this is the big, this is the big clean out. Yes. There'll be a pretty robust website that goes up on everything.
And just to remind everyone, the location to drop all of those items is actually going to be in Melrose.
I'll let, I'll let you deal with them.
Just kidding, Melrose. Anyone else? Counsel Chines.
A couple of things. First of all, just wanted to share an update on some of the work that's progressed on the vision and value statement since our last meeting. First of all, I very much appreciate the help of Jennifer McDonald and working with me on putting this together. We've met a couple of times just in the last week and did have a really productive discussion with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, which actually has a lot of tools available to help organize the work, help think through sort of how we engage with the community in a way that's going to be really productive and I think a good use not only of the town's time but also residents' time. So really grateful for the help they've given us so far, just in terms of some of the tools that we're looking at. We also are looking at applying for a technical assistance grant that would allow us to bring them on as a facilitator for the process as well. So more to come on that, but we hope we'll be able to move ahead with that. The other update just on that that I wanted to say is I'm starting to reach out to different chairs of the boards and commissions where we've sought representation on the, on the Vision and Value Statement Committee. So I'll be continuing that over the next couple of weeks so we can hopefully get some names identified. Switching gears, Wakefield Public Schools has put out a budget priorities survey. Superintendent Lyons has done this for the last couple of years, really to help identify what are those areas where members of the Wakefield Public School community would look for, different investments and different opportunities to allocate their resources. Obviously, with any budget, it's hard to do everything that we want to do, and so this has been a useful tool. Any parents with children in the Wakefield Public Schools should have received an email with the survey link, but if not, I know that the school department can help you with that. And then finally, just wanted to mention, I do have office hours this week, this Thursday, from 5:30 to 7:30 up in the trustees' room at the BB. So anyone who's interested in talking about the Vision and Value Statement or anything else that's going on in town, always looking forward to conversations there. So thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Chines. Anyone else? Counsel By.
Sure. Just a couple of updates. One, I have this fun new water bottle from Melrose Wakefield Healthcare, had their annual meeting. You guys will all be getting them, actually, last week. I'm a trustee member there. I just, it was such a great meeting, two reasons. One, I think it's about its third year anniversary at 88 Main Street. And when you talk about people coming to use our civic center, it's great to know businesses that are coming to town and living right there. I see employees walking to get coffee or a slice of pizza and, and so it's just a great addition to our town. And so I just wanted to recognize that. And also, hopefully, at an upcoming meeting, maybe we could invite them, just a little plug. They have a great community benefits program, and so many of our organizations in town, including our Board of Health, Wake Up, Wakefield, receive community benefit and grant money from them, and they do amazing work. I'd actually asked for a list of Wakefield specific, and they're working on that. But just something to keep in mind, they're really great partners. I know they sponsored one of the movies over the summer. They really are great partners. And so I just wanted to recognize them and thank them for making Wakefield their home. Couple other updates. There'll be more information about this, but the Wakefield Education Fund has their annual spelling bee on February 28. If you're interested, get together a team and show how great you are at spelling. Our next meeting on February 28, we're going to do a little update on our community garden. So I don't want to ruin the update that Steve will have. I do want to thank everyone. We had over 25 people come to our info session last week. All folks from as far away as Gloucester but who are interested, the people who work for the town, parents with young children, and seniors, everyone really excited and really, we had a really deliberate, thoughtful process that made better regulations that we will talk about next week. So I just wanted to thank everyone that came, and Steve and Jen and Dan McGrath who worked on that. And then the last update, I'm looking at you, Steve. Are you going to do a little update on the Department of Transportation response? Two seconds.
Okay. Well, as you know, we did a great, I think we did a lot of work on a survey regarding bus and commuter rail service into Wakefield. And I really thought we had over 200 thoughtful responses, you know, working with Marine and other members of the council. And Jen, we put together a very thoughtful letter to the MBTA, and they read it, which was nice. It's kind of sad that the fact that they read it is, we should be uplifted at that. And of course, they said that, well, you know, that's great, but we don't have the finances to do any of this. But the one ray of light in there is that they are ordering 60 new buses. So if we can maybe get a bit more bus service, that may help. So we'll keep working with the MBTA. I think we're on their radar because we did give them a pretty good survey. And we're trying to the, to the public out there to increase public transportation, whether it's in the commuter rail or in the bus service so people can get to Oak Grove and, or Malden Center and get into the town easier. So we are working on it. We also mentioned to them some of the accessibility issues at our stops. And I think a couple of the councils told me that it was even horrible just on a normal day getting onto the trains there. So we are, continue to working with them on this. And, but.
Have they, they've always pushed back on that, which surprises me based on the ADA, that no one in Wakefield who is on a wheelchair or, you know, cannot access a train. And they talked about, there's, it's not long enough for ramp, which makes no sense in Greenland. There's no way you cannot build something. So have they ever been specific about that?
I frankly think it's a financing issue.
Absolutely.
It's totally financing. And I think we feel that they have one in Reading. So if you're handicapped, go to Reading and get it on there.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's, that's their mentality.
Yeah, ADA just doesn't say that, though.
No, I know. No, I know.
You know, it's going to take someone.
It's not my mentality, I think that's.
No, I think it's going to take someone to.
Yeah. We may, we may need some help from our delegation.
Yeah. We'll see.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Counsel Dinaco.
I just have one congratulatory announcement. We already spoke about the basketball. Our Wakefield High School wrestling team, 2020, are middlesex league champions, undefeated in the middlesex league. I happened to bump into a group of parents at one of our local restaurants after the amazing win one night, and they were ecstatic. I mean, everywhere, the parents, I think, were more excited than the children were. But still, I mean, they were showing videos and it was just great to see. And just big kudos to, I believe his coach, Man Free D, is the, takes care of these students. Great job to the entire team and to the coaches.
My daughter's their manager.
There you go.
Thank you, Counsel Dinaco. Anyone else? A couple of things I wanted to mention. One, I just wanted to recognize Vice Chair Santos and to thank you, Vice Chair Santos, for running in an election for state rep because I know Wakefield is near and dear to your heart. And I know that you were, you were fighting very hard to make sure Wakefield had representation. So I know it's a lot of, a lot of effort on your behalf, so thank you for that. Indeed. But the consolation prize for all of us is that you remain at this table with us. So we have that. The White Ribbon Campaign is coming again this March. I'll remind everyone, that's the annual event where men will take the pledge against violence. And we'll have more on that at our next meeting and certainly during the month of March. There are a lot of good opportunities to learn more about that. And it's, and it's an important campaign and one that I encourage you to, to keep an eye out for. And finally, we, at our last meeting, you mentioned the Massachusetts Municipal Association, and we had an annual meeting we had gone to recently. And they put out this, it's called The Beacon, and it's, it's a magazine that we get. And for anyone who doesn't get this magazine at home, I don't know why, why you want it. But in case you don't, on page nine, we have something here. I don't know, Ryan, how close we can bring this, this shot. But we have Mr. Mayo, our town administrator, and you can see he's, he's deep in thought. And actually, Counsel Chines and I were both at this breakfast with him, and he was asking some very pointed questions of our, you know, of MMA leadership relative to some issues that directly impacted Wakefield. So.
It was, what, what happened to our chapter 7?
That's the expression. Fortunately, it's only a photograph and not audio. Because, but we thank Mr. Mayo for that, certainly. But this is just an example of the type of engagement that we have, not just within our town, you know, border, but across the community. And these are the sorts of engagements and events that do end up making a difference relative to, to making our town better as a whole. So thank you, Mr. Mayo, for that. And we have to name this expression. I think it's going to be called the Mayo from now on.
Definitely.
Indeed. Thank you. So with that, we come on to item number 16, which is the final item on the agenda, adjournment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Made by Counsel Dinaco, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. I'll remind everyone that our next regular town council meeting is Monday, February 24 at 7 p.m., coming live from here at WCIT Studios. So assuming no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Vote a six to zero. I draw this meeting to a close. Thank you for watching, Wakefield, and good night.